Okay. I'd like to bring the meeting to order and point out that the agenda that we've put together going forward will include not only calling to order the meeting, but also introducing each of the board members and the administration sitting at the table. So, I also have added a guideline more for my management capability, because I would forget, just a guideline as to how much time we'd like to spend with each of the different agenda items. So, it's not set in stone, but unless there's extenuating circumstances, I'd like to keep to this time for the agenda. So, why don't we start with Ed?
I'm Ed Webly, High School co-principal.
Kathy Cannon, business manager.
Michelle Kelly, representative from Addison.
Neil Cammon, representative from Virgins.
And I'm Kurt Haggas, I represent Ferrisburg.
Chris Cusino from Virgins.
Carrie Meavey, represent Cannon.
Lori Gethowski, Ferrisburg.
Wayne Howe, Assistant Superintendent and principal at Addison.
Tom O'Brien, the other Assistant Superintendent.
Gloria Martin, Assistant, Ministry of Assistant Two of the Superintendents.
Jeffrey Glassberg, representative from Waltham.
So, the next agenda item is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes, it's drafted.
Second.
Any discussion? Oops. Any addenda? No. So, if there is none, then I'd like to call the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes for November 11th, 2013, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Public Communications. Hi.
Hi.
Could you identify yourself, please?
It's been a long day. Susan House.
Thank you, Susan. It's not for me, I know who you are. It's for our wide audience.
I've been looking at the proposed budget from the last meeting, and my question is about agriculture faculty. Back in 2008, I brought my notes, just saying, there was a proposal from administration to go into an agreement with the Hannaford Career Center where they provide the instructor and professional development, but we can use the teacher for all the agriculture classes here along with middle school classes, and they would hire and pay the teacher. And I am concerned that perhaps we are paying based on this actual or this budget proposal that we are paying the teacher's salary, and I'm wondering if that is on our teacher's contract or on the Hannaford Career Center contract.
Well, I can tell you because I'm on the Hannaford Career Center Board as well.
Thank you.
And that teacher is covered by their contract.
By the Hannaford Career Center contract?
Yes.
And paid on their pay scale?
Based on their pay scale, yes.
But it comes out of our budget?
We've already said, Susan, we...
Reimbursed approximately two-thirds of the cost. Total cost for that.
From Hannaford?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll close public communication. Is there an educational presentation?
We were going to defer in honor of the budgetary discussions that we're going to have to have. But things are going swimmingly, anyway.
Okay.
Swimmingly.
All right. Board communications?
I have two things.
Yeah?
The first is compliments to Karen Jordan and her coworkers from Middlebury and Bristol for putting together an absolutely magnificent performance here the other night. It was just the best choral thing that I've seen in years and years and years, and so much fun to see all those kids together, notwithstanding a couple of them fainting because they were lock needs while they were singing. I guess that's a no-no. But anyway. The other thing I just want to bring up that as part of the public discourse associated with the bond vote, I received a copy of correspondence, actually penned by somebody in this room, expressing their opinion on the validity of the bond work, and I think it's absolutely great that citizens make their opinions known, that's good. This particular letter went on to accuse me as a board member of conflict of interest. Just want to make a statement in public that there is no way, shape, or form that I am operating on this board in conflict of interest of any conflict of interest policy, neither that of the district nor of my employer, who happens to be the state of Vermont. So, if the individual who's written this is interested in presenting some evidence to the contrary, I'd like to see that, but if not, I just want to make it real clear to the people that are in this room that I have served you faithfully for 11 years without conflict, and that I resent very significantly the implication otherwise. And that's my statement.
Okay. Any other board communications?
Back into the public discussion, because I like to, I was obviously the one who...
David?
Yeah, okay.
I really would rather you not have this conversation here.
Oh.
If you and Neil could talk, that would be great.
Well, I think you just brought it up.
Actually, I just publicly rebute your accusation.
It wasn't an accusation.
And that's ended the discussion. I'd like one to me.
Hmm?
Read like one to me.
It was not. It was if you...
If both of you would have this conversation...
Can I go back and open up public discussion? I mean, it closed before I got my hand up.
Sure.
Or not? It's up to you.
You have a statement?
You're on the board. I'll just submit the questions that I...
Do we have time?
What?
Yep.
I've asked some specific questions on those four questions that were, I don't even need to get into that. All I presented in my Part II letter, which most people haven't seen, but I did copy the people on the board, so there's no surprises, that as I watched the evolution of the last year, I had some concerns. And the concerns that I had was that there was, seemed to be some, people were trying to push their personal agenda. And all I wanted to do in that letter that you'll all, I don't know whether you'll see it tomorrow, you probably won't see it till after the vote, because I put it on front page forum, so it probably won't come up till nine or 10 o'clock tomorrow night. But, all I want to do is present to the voters a list of the things that I saw that I thought were indicative of some of our board members pushing their personal agenda. And yes, I did post a note relative to what the state, I think it's a state, maybe it's a school, considers conflict of interest. And I posted a note, a link, if you will, about Kurt. Part of his oath, if you will, on line 22, it says he's supposed to permit, encourage public discussion, I think, that might not be the exact words, but it's basically, it was a line 22, anyway. And you've shut it, you've shut us off, you've shut us off from that. And I call that the nuclear option. Now, maybe that's the wrong thing to say, but as we go along, I talked about Jeff in there, a very successful businessman who also has, has made many developments in green energy.
Stop. I have none. That is totally incorrect. My involvement with renewable energy...
Oh, renew, I'm sorry, renewable.
...involves a chainsaw and cutting firewood on my land.
Okay, well...
So, let's be clear. Don't go okay and move on.
Well...
You published accusations.
Those were not accusations, those were, what I want people to do is...
You are wrong on the facts, Mr. Ambrose, and you've lost my respect as a result.
Okay, and we talked about that the other night, and we talked about losing respect, and I lost respect for you guys, but nonetheless, all I want people to do, you know, like, is look at, read my document. Don't go look at all the things that I've been looking at for eight months. Read my document all the way through, digest it, see what I'm trying to say, and then go back and look at what I've been looking at. I mean, you people say a lot of things at these meetings, I have no idea what you're talking about. I go back and I research them, and I get a different opinion. Like Neil, the other day you said, oh, yeah, you mentioned that you were gonna, I'll write the response, you word proof it, you word, you wordsmith it. What's that all about?
What that's all about is I am the clerk of this board, and as such, I am responsible for providing the written statements of this board. I have a very busy, David, a very busy professional career. I do not have a lot of time to engage in wordsmithing. I did the best I could, and I asked for the assistance of my colleagues on this board to help me create the most accurate possible statement of this board's intent. There's nothing nefarious about that.
Okay, well, if you look...
So, one more minute, David.
Huh?
One more minute.
If you look at what I said, if it walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, or whatever, it's gonna be a duck. And you read my thing and then look at all the comments that I had that I linked to, and all I want is the people to do is to look at what I've been looking at and let them make their own judgment. If they think you're in, pushing your own agenda, that's their decision, not mine. I just gave them the information. That's all I did, Neil. And I'm not gonna apologize for it.
Good, you shouldn't, but I'll tell you what, Mr. Ambrose, like Jeff, I am offended, and I'm not easily offended. I got a pretty thick skin. I got a lot of people that work for me that report to me, and I work for a pretty tough guy, and I'm not thin-skinned at all. But what you did was accusatory and offensive, and it doesn't comport with the facts.
You chewed my butt out after one of the meetings because I asked you to shut your phone off. And that actually was the same meeting when I suggested that maybe we're building a million dollars in our, in our $2 million budget, and you took great offense at that.
You know why I just took my phone out? Because I know you noticed it. So that I could refer to the letter that I wrote back to you that I have requested that you publicly circulate as a response to your Facebook or your front porch forum post. Because I wanted to make sure that I hit publicly in this meeting every intent that I had.
Okay, yeah, okay, I don't know what you're talking about.
I sent it to you, I sent it to you this afternoon in response, and I publicly, I sent you a response this afternoon, and I am publicly here and now, and in that letter that I just sent you, asking you to post on front porch forum a retraction of your accusation of me as having operated in conflict of interest. I will look for it.
You take that as a...
Okay, let's move on.
Yeah.
Okay, I will look for it.
I ain't gonna do it.
You lost my respect, too.
So, even though that was difficult and uncomfortable for a lot of people...
It was uncomfortable to me, believe me, because I have upset my family, too.
I think that it's important that we have open discussions like this.
Right, and I hope people read the note as it was written and intended.
Okay. So, are there any other board communications? I'd like to jump back and introduce the two students that entered during that conversation, like the camera to also notice that they are on the Virgins math team. So, I don't know, Tia, are you the new representative for your class?
She is, yeah.
Okay, go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Tommy Hodgson, senior, and this is Tia Hunt, junior. We're gonna be student reps to the board.
Okay, so one of the things that we're gonna start doing with the agenda is, at the beginning of each meeting, we're gonna go around the table and make sure everyone's identified. I didn't just pick you guys.
Okay.
So, thanks for coming. How'd the meet go?
It was pretty good. We placed six out of 12 there.
Excellent.
Which is pretty good, especially with the competition from Burlington, in South Burlington.
Great. Super.
Were you the biggest team, Tommy, or...
What's that?
Were you the biggest team?
It seemed like it. I think we had the most members there.
Yeah, we had a lot, yeah.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
And that actually brings us to the next report, which would be...
Oh, the student reps.
The student representatives.
First off, I just want to apologize why I haven't been here. I've been involved in a number of different school activities, and this is the first meeting that I've had an opportunity to come to. But it's good to be back. So, I don't know if I should fill you in on everything that's happened in my absence, so we'll just kind of go back over the past, like, few weeks or so. This past Friday, a number of Virgins students participated in the Broadway Direct Musical where they actually performed with Broadway, Broadway performers, and that was Friday. I went, and it was a, it was a joy to see, they all did very well. That was after the musical, which was also at the Opera House, you know, because the auditorium's unavailable. But that was a successful show as well. Winter sports are underway, I believe.
Yeah, the first boys' basketball game is on Saturday.
And that's a home game, right?
Yeah, that's a home game.
And the girls' first game is Saturday, too, but it's away?
Yeah, and their first home game is next Thursday.
Oh, yeah, okay. And I think wrestling's underway as well, they have a meet. I want to say it's Thursday, but I could be wrong about that. And there are band concerts coming up this week as well, on Wednesday at 7:00 in the high school gym. The band, the middle school band and the high school band are gonna be performing a number of pieces, and some of them are holiday-related.
So, I think the high school's on Wednesday and the...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, high school's on Wednesday, middle school's on Thursday, thank you.
Yep.
And I think that's all I have at the moment.
Okay. Tia, do you have anything else?
Same as Tommy, I guess. No, I can't think of anything else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Welcome. Stephanie or Ed, do you want something?
I'm deferring so we can spend the time on the budget.
Okay.
I just need a little more than one person. It's here, it's Wednesday and Thursday.
You're gonna be impressed.
Yeah, I'm still having all these firsts. The reason I was late is I realized the first for me is I don't know where they keep the copier paper in the main office.
You don't want to use it, or do you?
No, if you don't want to use it, that's fine. I just wanted to note to the principals, you know, to share with faculty how appreciative we are of the effort that went into staging the musical this year.
Mm-hmm.
And making that happen despite trying circumstances. So, I know I enjoyed it and we're very appreciative of the effort. Thank you.
Bob Worley's crew did an amazing job transporting a lot of material and cleaning a lot of surfaces and really made it possible, so...
Thank you.
Can I just ask if Sue and Karen really rose to the occasion?
Absolutely.
That was Christina talking.
Sorry.
I didn't see the camera get around, but...
They're gone.
Okay. Nothing else from the principals? Superintendent?
I will also defer to questions.
I apologize for the omission, but I'd like to add to the agenda the business manager between the superintendent and the Hannaford Career Center.
And I'll just pass out the year-to-date information, and not really spend a lot of time going over it in deference to the budget development, but I was asked to provide this statement at every meeting and not when budgets are completed, which has been my And also, I will say that I did not know where the extra staplers, staples were for the copier, so the copier seized up, needed staples, and lots of others, only, there's not enough to go around, so... Does anyone have anything specific? No, I...
Here, I can share. Is there sort of a summary, bottom-line page?
If we go to...
I know there is.
There is. It's at the bottom of page 10.
I can share. Chris and I can.
So, at the bottom of page 10, we see the general fund budget is 9.900 dollars.
Yeah.
We spent 4.7. We've encumbered 2.9 for an amount remaining of 2.2. And so remember, the encumbrances are the remaining salaries under contract plus social security. And I would guess, you know, the bulk would be benefits in the amount remaining, utilities, benefits. I would assume that most supply purchases were made at the beginning of the year, the bulk of them.
Any other questions?
Any indication of how we're trending?
No, it's too soon. It's really too soon for that. Okay.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
The next item is Hannaford Career Center, and I'm still representing Virgins on the Hannaford Career Center Board. I will be looking for others to take that over next March if anyone's interested. I'll just give you three, three months to think about it. The solar project that I've been talking about at the Hannaford Career Center is complete. There are pictures on the website if you'd like to take a look at it. It was installed by a local contractor in Bristol, and we had already procured the solar panels, so those were not part of the current project. And then, the barn that I've been talking about is being built out of the Building and Equipment Reserve Fund, much like what we're trying to set up here at the high school. The Hannaford Center has a Building and Equipment Reserve Fund, which they use for buildings and some equipment, although there is a state program to buy equipment for, for career centers, and part of that fund is being used to replace and buy a new lathe at the career center. Everyone, anybody know what a lathe is?
I know what a lathe is.
You know what a lathe is?
Absolutely.
Okay. It's quite, it's numerically controlled, so it's up to date, and it's going to allow students to move from the career center directly into the working place. Yep?
Any idea what the balance is in that reserve fund? Just order a magnitude.
I think it's about 85,000 right now.
So, not big.
No, no. So, I think it's based on the need, you know, over, over a few years, they decide how much of the, I don't think there is a policy, but I'll check, like what we're trying to institute, of any percentage or any amount on an annual basis. But I think based on what they use over a period of years, they've allocated money to go into that fund. Another thing that, that hopefully will be done by March, so whoever takes over the Hannaford Career Center responsibility won't have to be involved with, but if, if it is not done by then, I'll continue to be part of the teacher's contract negotiation at the Hannaford Career Center, but that's, we've started meeting on that, and we're going to meet with the union, and this is, the Hannaford Career Center teachers are actually on the Middlebury Teachers Union, so we'll be negotiating with the Middlebury Teachers Union, and we're starting that this week, so... That's about all I have for Hannaford Career. Anybody have any questions or comments? Thanks. And the action items, I've also added something to the agenda. If you could add under the business matters, a number two, after the approval of the bills and the director's orders, number two would be for financial and business responsibility of the business manager. I'd like to discuss that after the approval of the bills. Financial slash business responsibility of the business manager. It'll become much more clear when we start the discussion. But that brings us to the approval of the bills and director's orders. Chris, do you have comments of figure?
It is for 687,382.57.
Would you like to...
I will second.
Would you like to make that into a motion?
Oh, yes, so moved.
Okay.
The listed number.
I will second it.
Any other discussion?
Anything look fine?
Not anything, I didn't notice anything that was out of the ordinary.
Okay.
Are there any payments remaining on the construction contract, or is that...
Yes, I think that's a payment on the construction contract. I think that includes the payment to Hannaford. So, that's why it's so big.
Anything else? So, there's, the motion is to approve the bills and director's orders in the amount And we have a second, and I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is policy for maintenance budgeting.
What about the...
Number two.
Oh, number two.
Yeah, come on. There you go.
They're all wondering.
Financial business responsibility, Kathy.
So, that's a fancy name for adding me as a signer to the checking account. And so, we've, this is the last board that I, to have this discussion with, and I'm asking that the board allow me to be a signer on the school's checking account. There are many times when we need a signature that related to banking transactions, mostly ACH transfers, and we have to go and get a signature from the treasurer. And it's, sometimes it's just not convenient to go and get her signature before the bank can go to the next step. The bank has recommended that, they have said that most schools have the business manager as a signer for that reason. In my mind, it's really, it's really administrative, it's purely administrative. I don't intend to sign checks. We did ask our auditors if we had enough controls in place for this to occur, and they said that we were fine. I don't reconcile the bank statements, and I don't initiate ACH transactions. So, those would be two controls that would prevent me from absconding with the school's money. The checks that we currently write, you know, the school treasurer, her signature is in the computer, all the checks bear her signature.
Out of curiosity, who does balance the books? I feel like I should know this, but I don't.
So, Carol Anderson prepares the, there's the bank reconciliation. Pam Preston in payroll initiates almost all of the ACH transfers. Everything, all of this is pretty much payroll-related. We have daily limits, monthly limits. If we have three pays in a month, we'll bump up against our monthly limit, so then that requires a signature. Anyway, any questions?
You need a motion, please.
Yep.
How does the treasurer feel about this?
Well, she would review the transactions that would require this. I have not specifically asked her. That is, that is part of her responsibility. She's reviewing, you know, the payroll, the taxes, you know, she's reviewing the expenses for the items that require a... for the items that require us to have an ACH transfer.
I'll make a motion that we allow Kathy Cannon to put assigned checks for.
The high school.
The high school.
Virginia Junior High School.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? More extensions? Thank you. Now we'll move on to the policy. Policy is maintenance budgeting. This is the second reading, and we'd like to work towards an adoption tonight. This is the second reading and for adoption. Incorporated comments from the last board meeting, we'll see those specifically italicized in the third paragraph, and then added the sentence at the very end regarding the report.
Yep, he's heading around. Did you stop it?
It's on me time.
I can witness it.
Yes.
Oh, can you?
There's more.
So in addition to what was added per your discussion at the last meeting, there needs to be some definition provided to an amount not to exceed. The example that you have there was based upon a nine million dollar budget, and that being one percent or half a percent. But your pleasure in terms of just what that capital fund should be funded at needs to be determined.
How will this affect penalty status? I mean, if, this will be a capital, ninety thousand dollars say goes in, that will add to the budget, and that will translate into increased cost per pupil. So the, right?
It will.
So the higher we make it, the tighter it would be to remain out of the penalty per student, right?
Theoretically, yes, Michelle, but I don't think we're that close. I'm not expecting that that number is going to be much more than the example that's there.
I just didn't know what the ninety thousand dollars would do to our position.
It's a good question, but now Kathy, I know with the bond conversation we've had, that bond debt is not subject to the double penalty calculation.
Right. We could exclude that from the penalty.
Now, can we not exclude this, since this is capital and designed for school improvement?
It's a line item.
So we need to raise.
Even though it's separately warned and separately.
Still part of it expanding.
All right, yeah, you would know because you guys have it, and you probably live with that, yeah.
And so I don't have the information yet to see if, how, if we are close to the penalty amount, so that might come for a while, but it would be part of the equation.
I've been giving this some thought in terms of the amount of money that we would be talking about, and it seems like every year a dollar is no longer a dollar. And so if we put something like forty-five thousand or ninety thousand dollars, it would take a long time to save up for the next roof that we need.
But let's make an important distinction. When you read this policy, the first two paragraphs really relate to the operating budget. The second two paragraphs relate to creating reserves.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you.
And that might be reason enough to separate this, because I keep tracking between those two things.
Thank you, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
One is consistent in terms of the maintenance of the facilities.
Right.
And the other is to prepare for events that may not be predictable. So I agree that it shouldn't be a dollar value, that it should be a not-to-exceed percentage. I'm wondering whether ninety thousand dollars is enough in today's dollars.
Not this year.
And, you know, if we were to look at it over a long period of time, it would be easier to make a decision, but, you know, I think one percent is a safe figure over a long period of time.
Could I just, could I just point something out?
Sure.
So in the, let's see, the budget for FY twelve thirteen, looking at just that single line item for building, maintenance, and repair, we budgeted forty thousand dollars, we spent seventy-nine thousand dollars. And then the budget for thirteen fourteen is forty-seven five, as is what's been proposed up till now, is then the same forty-seven five.
But this year, we're well above that.
Already.
Aren't we? I mean, I think I saw that in here.
He said seventy-nine.
Yeah, we spent for twelve thirteen, just looking at that one line. So building repair, we've already spent thirty-one, three sixty-six, on a budget of forty-seven five.
Which is the code on that?
It's twenty-six hundred, five four, three hundred. If we're only looking that that's, to identify that single one line. So looking at, what are, so this is on page ten. This is page on ten of the financials that I just handed out.
There it is, that's, there it is, there it is, there it is, yes.
Right in the middle of the page.
Oh, okay. Where it, where it. It would keep, stay in tune with the rest of the budget through the years, and let's suppose it's one percent. You're also talking about identifying an amount for a request for a capital projects fund to begin that, and we have hopefully a successful bond that'll be hanging out there. So understanding what the needs are, I'd recommend that you be cautious in the first move here.
Well, if it's not to exceed, we can certainly choose to imbue the budget with less.
That's right.
And we'll have the outcome of the vote here, we'll know what, whether we need to go high or low before we have to make a decision. One percent?
Well, that's why, what I'm suggesting, that, you know, one percent to me would be a minimum. But, you know, just based on my experience, you know, one percent of your cash flow or your operating budget is very low. You know, so I guess that would leave us, you know, at least a chance to start being preventative rather than proactive, or proactive rather than reactive. So, you know, we can change it if it's not enough. But I do not want to go back to it being an option. You know, I've seen too many indicate, too many instances of things failing in this building, and there are no money to fix it. So I want to get out of that. I don't want to, I don't want to fund operating budgets with booster club money, that kind of thing. So that's, that's my soapbox, I'll get off of it now, but it needs to be done, and it needs to be adhered to, and so we don't get into a similar situation.
Are we going to move this policy tonight, or are we going to actually do a third reading on it?
No, I'd like to.
Second reading adoption.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, I, I kind of defer to you and Jeff, I'm good with the one percent. It seems de minimis, actually, for a big building, but.
Well, everybody can comment, so. What do you think, Jeff?
One percent's a good place to start.
Yep.
I think so, too. I'm okay with one percent.
I mean, no disrespect for my other members, it's just, this guy's stock in trade, that's all.
If we can always revisit the issue, if we needed it to be more at some point, then that's fine. At least, because if we came out with something that gave us a lot of latitude to put a lot of funds somewhere, I think people might get frustrated or feel like that we're attempting to do or take on more cost for them. And I'd rather that they go along with it and let us revisit it later when they might be more inclined to think that way.
So do we need to read this again before adoption?
Can we have further discussion?
Of course.
On the second section, which is with respect to a capital projects fund. We had a good presentation with the Lions Club last week, and during the Q and A, one of the members of the audience asked how the community could be assured that we'll spend the money in the right way in the future. And it was a really good question, and one of the answers to that is to continue to have an engaged citizenry who are looking out and seeing what the school board is doing. But when we talk about putting before the voters funds to create what in my mind would be reserves, I think it brings with it a responsibility to perhaps segregate those in such a way that the board doesn't have the ability to spend that for things other than for what it was reserved for. So, for example, and for example only, if we proposed to put ten thousand dollars into reserve, and we said we want to split five of it to create a roof reserve, and five of it to create a kitchen equipment reserve. If the, a proposal comes before us to fund a new piece of equipment, or a place to put a new piece of equipment, or something related to a new program, what is it that will prevent that board in the future from going into a roof reserve fund to take the money to spend it on the new thing? I'm not suggesting I have the answer, but, you know, Tom, maybe you want to speak to that.
Well, I think when you, if you, when you establish the fund, you're indicating its purpose. And so you can, you can be as specific as you just were, or more specific, but you establish the purpose of that fund. It's not, it's not just a free-for-all. So you could say it's, you could say it's particularly to take care of the roof the next time, for example. You could say it's to take care of unbudgeted and unbudgeted items in terms of building upkeep.
So there might be a contingency component. So let's just take this for, so if we were to go out to the voters, would our question to the voters say, we're asking for, again, I'm just going to use random numbers, we're going to ask for fifty thousand dollars, and we propose to allocate it in these ways? The fifty thousand dollars would be ten to the roof fund, ten to the kitchen fund, ten to the boiler fund, and maybe there's ten thousand that goes into a contingency fund, something like that?
You know, when this was first presented to you, we had unanticipated maintenance, and it was suggested that we had anticipated, and I thought about that for a while as during the redraft. If you, if you know of something that's going to come up in the near future, and, you know, it could be the roof, I don't want to use the roof all the time, but, that had to be replaced or repaired in some way, you could identify that in the beginning. If you had more than one purpose for the fund, you could indicate that this is going to cover a roof repair, I don't know, what else?
Kitchen.
Elevator. Kitchen upgrade and an elevator improvement.
And a new pool.
Well, that's the point.
That's a good point. I think, I like the identified as a change, but I want to go to my experience on the elementary school board, when we had fuel oil contamination that wasn't identified, unforeseen, it happened, that was how we had to cover its costs, was by dipping into our capital fund. And that was a perfectly good use of the capital fund. But you wouldn't plan for a fuel spill, you know? So.
So it's interesting, just as an example, in Addison, they have three funds, capital projects fund, a technology fund, and a kitchen fund.
Ah, interesting.
And each year, the voters are asked to contribute or not, in some cases, contribute to those specific funds.
To those specific.
So you could have separate, you could have this capital projects fund, you could have a fund to take care of the, you could have a roof fund, roof replacement.
Three separate special articles. But I think the board, in its wisdom when they originally set it up, did not prescribe very specific pieces of equipment, where this is the roof fund. So, for example, I remember sitting up at a town meeting and people talking about, you know, the roof's getting old, and it looks like five years down the road, we're going to have to replace it, and then the septic system went, and we had to completely overhaul the septic system, and the board just decided that's where we're going to put the money. We told people at town meeting last year, this is where we think we're going to go, but now the emergency popped up. So I don't think you'd want to be too prescriptive in what the fund's going to be, and rely on the wisdom of the board five years hence to come up with what the best way to spend that money is.
We kind of looked at it as an insurance policy, if the boiler went, or we had a leak, or whatever, but I mean, it was always the capital fund was for capital improvements on, you know, we never took from it for the technology, or to put a new, you know, a minor thing in the, in the school. It was always a, something that was a big ticket item and necessary for the maintenance and unexpected, you know?
Can that answer your question, Jeff?
It does.
Does it make you lean one way or another as to what?
I mean, I think what I'm hearing is we'll have to decide what we want to do for language, if we want to put a question before the voters as to how specific we'll choose to be.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that.
Or not.
By creating a policy, we have to be that specific in the policy. But, you know, I showed you this at the Lions Club, and, you know, I don't know if, is everybody going to get a copy of this tonight, or?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so, so the vision that I have is that the facility operating and maintenance plan will generate, you know, the categories that we need to fund over a period of time. You know, it's just a, it's just a draft so far, and one of the things that isn't in here that hopefully we'll be able to add is, is, you know, life of the different categories that are in here, you know, what the usable life is.
You mean a depreciation schedule?
Yeah, either a depreciation schedule, or, you know, when you, when you deal with, with systems usable life, you know, it's always going to be, you know, an estimate. You know, if you buy a roof, it's guaranteed for twenty-five years, you know that it's going to last, or be repaired, or be replaced at no cost for at least those twenty-five years. Most of the guarantees for systems that are identified in here are gone, are done, you know, they're not guaranteed anymore. But we'll have to come up with life, a life, a usable life for each of these different systems, and then it should actually be relatively easy to determine how much it's going to cost to maintain and to replace them after a period of time. So I think that's how we get specific, Jeff, how we control ourselves from, from sacking the fund, if you will. I think that's, that's our responsibility. But what you've just mentioned, you're looking at known needs over a period of time. Anticipated, yeah. You just committed, well, part of what you're committing yourself to is one percent, not to exceed one percent of the general operating budget, so that's a given every year. Yes. If you pass it. Yeah. And it's for the purpose of building and maintenance repairs, and would go, would appear in your operating budget. The capital projects fund is going, is not going to be a part of the operating budget. It's going to be a separate fund, and for separate purposes, not to, not to do the day-to-day, or even year-to-year maintenance of the building.
Do you really feel that a board would sack a capital? Do you really feel that a board would sack a capital projects fund for other reasons than capital improvement?
I certainly hope not.
Not ask for it again the next year.
Yeah.
Like a senior hot tub or something?
No. I'm talking about putting it into programs, or putting it into other needs that at the time seem, you know, more important, I guess. But...
You could put a caveat in, I mean, that it's only for depreciating, I mean, I don't know how you would put that. I mean, if you really wanted to say that, to lock the door, but...
Yeah. I don't think we need to lock the door, and just, I'm saying that I think that we will be able to get more specific as we have a plan that has that kind of information in it. Whereas now, we don't, we have the beginnings of a plan, but we don't have usable life on any of these systems. So, you know, that'll be the next step. And the other thing we'll have is experience. And we can go back for dollar values, but we don't know, I don't think we can go back and specifically say that in the operating and maintenance budget last year, well, I guess we can, we replaced the exit lights, because they were last serviced in the summer of 2013. So, I think the policy is the first step. The next step is to make sure that the plan gets, becomes a reality.
So, when you put the warning out for establishing the fund, that's where the detail, where the purpose of the fund is going to be?
Right.
Described.
Right.
And then that, those fund balances would be separately identifiable on the financial statements?
Yes. So, those would be outside of the general fund 001, and at most schools, it's 006. So, it would be accounted for separately, you know, to be allowed to accumulate.
Any other discussion? So, do we need a separate reading of this with the changes that we made? Amount not to exceed 1%?
1%.
That's the change.
Yeah.
I didn't hear any other changes.
I didn't either.
I like this, I like the intent of it. I think it's a good thing to do.
Yeah.
I think it's responsive to the comments we got at our last board meeting, so...
Yeah, and the other, I don't know, Jeff, if you were going to talk more about the question that we got, but the thing that, the thing that I think we made a commitment to, in front of the Lions Club at least, is that, you know, the institutional knowledge will be in this document, that there won't be, you know, if all, you know, let's say, over the next five years, all the board members are, you know, replaced, and Bob goes somewhere else, and, you know, Ed retires, or Stephanie, you know, gets hit by a beer truck or something, you know? The question was, where, yeah. I just came up with whatever came off the top of my head, but the institutional knowledge, you know, will be here, because the person at the Lions Club was concerned that, you know, while what we were doing was a good thing for the present, what would ensure that the future, that the same thing would take place? And that's why I think the institutional knowledge, you know, can be transferred on a, you know, with a document, rather than word-of-mouth, or, you know, experience of individuals. So, I thought that was a good conversation to have with that lady. I don't have anything else.
Okay.
So, motion?
I will move to adopt this policy as revised.
Second.
So, the only revision being, in order to properly fund an ongoing and systematic preventative maintenance and repair program, the VUHS board shall include in the annual budget proposal an amount not to exceed 1% of the total generally, general operating budget for identified maintenance and repair needs. The rest of it would remain the same.
Yes.
And we have a second? Any other discussion? Please signify that you're in favor of the policy as written by saying aye?
Aye.
Any ayes, or abstentions? Thank you. Is Peter Hiding somewhere, or are you going to take care of winter coaches? He's not? The next agenda item was winter coaches, and I think they're listed in here. Middle school boys' basketball, Cameron Curler for both seventh and eighth grade teams. Middle school girls' basketball, Mark Paredes and Cody Quatrochi, Quatroci?
Quatrochi.
Middle school cheerleading, Alexis LaBerge. Is Cody a student that just graduated?
Yes.
Yep.
Cameron's a graduate as well?
Couple, two years.
Oh, that's Colin?
No, that's Cam.
Okay. Oh, wow.
Here.
Cameron is?
All right.
Yes, he is.
Excellent. Good. That's great.
Alexis is class of 2007.
Okay.
Alexis LaBerge.
That's right.
Yeah, but Cody just graduated last year?
Yes, he did. He's been in Germany for a semester, playing basketball.
Very good.
So, Lou?
All right, you sure?
Second.
So, there's a motion on the floor to accept the following, the list as I read it, and approve for the 2013-14 season, school year, the middle school boys' basketball, and middle school girls' basketball, and middle school cheerleading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, or abstaining? Thank you very much. Did you want to say something, Tia? Okay. PBGR portfolio course proposal.
Not here?
Not here.
I brought that up last time in the absence of Mrs. Cricaldi. And it would still stand as an elective, so we don't need to pass it in front of the board as an elective. It was just a matter of explaining it to you, and that is, that it's a way of manufacturing enough time for a student to be able to complete their PBGRs by making it a class, an elective class during the day, thus giving them 350 minutes a week to do research, to put together portfolio, to do whatever their PBGR is for one semester. Given that boost, it's usually, I can envision it as being a first semester junior, second semester junior, class in popularity, because they're going to have, pretty much have their PBGR portfolio done by midway through their senior year. They've got plenty to do their first semester, their senior year, as I'm sure Tommy Lee will tell you.
You bet.
And so, I had thought we were going to have a more formal presentation, but I don't think there's much more than that that's been developed. I don't think there's been any, we're going to be using the PBGRs and the PBGR rubrics to be able to sort of form how that time will be used, and there'll be a learning contract involved, and I think it's just going to be great. But that's a little bit more detail than I went in last time.
Did you say 350 minutes a week?
Yeah.
That's six hours, no, six times six, 36, yeah, just about six hours.
That's what's...
For an elective class?
Yeah, that's 70 minutes a day.
Oh, okay.
70, 71 minutes a day, and if you use that well, that's an awful lot of time to...
That is.
Be able to polish up a PBGR. The other option would be that you could have a PBGR elective, or a PBGR AB elective, which would be half that, and that you'd be going every other day.
But did you just say it's an elective course, right? That's what you said at the beginning?
Yes. But you can have elective in two different formats. You can have it every day for a semester, or every other day for a semester. And it would depend on the needs, and that plasticity would allow us to kind of adjust to individual needs. So, I forgot that detail.
So, Ed, are you saying it could be a half-credit course or a full-credit course?
That's how it would come out.
Okay.
But it'd all be elective.
Okay.
That's a great question. Which is that, I don't know.
What was the question?
Who's the teacher?
Who's the teacher? So, there's no one assigned to it yet?
Not yet. Be on a rotating basis, or catch as catch can, or somebody who has a smaller enrollment, and there are a couple.
Tia, could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, you're in this, you know, you're in the thick of it.
I am not, I'm not, not.
Oh, that's right, you're not. It's freshman, first-year students this year that are going through it. Well, what are you hearing in the halls then, either of you two, about sort of the PBGRs and what students are saying? If you're willing to say.
I don't really hear much about it, honestly.
Um, I actually went to a conference, Mr. Howe was there as well, and me and a friend of mine went to a seminar on PBGRs, which is pretty much where I learned all about it, because it's not really talked about in mine or Tommy's classes. We hear about it on like half-days, where we just do whatever we want, and freshmen and sophomores normally work on PBGR things, but other than that...
Like Wednesday. Right, exactly.
Like Wednesday coming up.
Other than that, that's the only time I've really learned about it.
Okay, fair enough.
Good question.
So, I assume that you're just informing us that instead of this being a proposal...
Yes. I believe that...
We would have to take any action.
If it were a required course, I would need your approval. An elective, we've never done that.
Yeah. Thank you for informing us.
I remember Jay, last year at the last board meeting, that that decision needed to be made pretty quickly, or else it's not going to make it in the course book. Is that correct? So, in order for it to be in the course book, you would have to probably decide today, or not?
I think I would have to decide today.
Yeah.
That's what it is. So, and with that, and I have to consult with Christine, which is only fair.
So, Christine, I just want to make sure that we get the public record accurately, so whenever you talk, and don't identify yourself on the...
I'm sorry.
Respond to you.
I'm so not used to that, yeah.
That's okay.
I'll work on it.
That's all right. I just, I think it's really important that people who watch the tapes understand who's talking, and that's why I'm kind of being, I'm stickler about it.
So, can I, could I ask, even though I'm not sure, we've gone both ways in the past as far as being binding, but could I ask for the board to either, I don't know if I want to call it approval, but thumbs up or thumbs down, Siskel and Eber type of thing on the PBGR idea?
Yes, you can ask that. Yeah.
Can I ask that, please?
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. You know, for someone to be successful, they need to prepare and be directed, so I think it's a great idea to have it be a course.
Is there anybody that doesn't think that way?
I think you could reflect in the minutes that the board approved the elective. If you take an action.
You want a motion?
Yeah.
I move that the board accept Principal's webly suggestion for the one-credit elective class for the PBGRs. To begin, when are you going to begin?
It could begin next year for juniors, next year's junior class.
To begin in 2014.
And we have a second? Did you get that?
No, I didn't have that one.
Chris? Any other discussion, questions, or comments?
Or, Christina, you said it could be a half-credit or a full-credit class?
Half-credit or full-credit.
So, I don't know if you want to make that distinction.
That was Christina.
Or it could be...
It sounds, I mean, it sounds good either way to me.
And here's how it would work, you'd have one teacher teaching it all the time.
Yeah.
And a kid who only wants a half-credit would drop in on just eight days with that teacher, so you don't have to have an additional teacher to have an additional section.
So, it'd be like a revolving cast of characters through there.
It could be.
Depending upon their needs.
Right, right, no, I get that, I get that.
Thank you.
Do you want the motion amended, or is that all right?
I think it's fine. Are we going to vote on it, or is it just a motion for the...
Yeah, we're going to vote on it, but...
Call the question.
Could you read it back, Glory?
The motion, and the shell to accept a proposal from Mr. Webly for the PBGR course as a half-credit or one-credit elective beginning of 2014.
Now, that was a well-crafted motion.
Oh, yes.
And it's been...
Glory did it much better than I did.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, so largely because many people on the agenda chose not to report tonight, we're an hour ahead of time.
Good.
So...
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That the board take a bit of that time that we've saved, could take a look at the plan that was presented, the draft plan, maybe get some feedback to Bob, so he can be on his way shortly, and we can get to budget right after that.
Okay.
Are there any more copies of that, or is it already in the issue?
We had, I don't know.
It wasn't circulated yet.
Yeah, I can share with Clay.
Right? It's going to be circulated right now.
Oh, you do?
He's got some too.
Oh, wow, look at this.
Oh, luck, you can have your very own.
Like I said at the last one.
I didn't do.
So, what we're doing is adding a discussion item before the budget development on the agenda.
Here goes.
To discuss the facility operating plan. So, that's the new A, and the budget becomes B.
The last two issues will be 2:48 PM today, so...
Oh, so what I have is...
Oh, timestamp on the inside of the front page.
We got this the second to December.
I don't have any.
Do you want this public, or?
I don't care.
Okay.
Yeah, I've already passed it, I don't care. Does there anybody, I have one in the public?
I have an old one.
Well, you're sort of public.
Thank you. So, can you direct us in our reading, rather than have people all over the place?
And Stephanie and I are certainly going to remind you all that it's extraordinarily a beginner's tool at this point. It's not fleshed out in any great detail, but if you turn, you know, there's a facility operating plan index, which is as yet not valuable, because we haven't expanded it. So, you turn to basic building information, and we would like to emphasize that we... And, uh, we, I would like to emphasize that we do have all the prints and CDs, uh, extant that, that should be here, either in the maintenance closet or downstairs, and they are in, uh, good order.
That's to say the plans and so forth?
Right, the architectural plans. Am I right, Mr. Worley?
Yes, sir.
Are there copies elsewhere?
There are two copies here, and a member had a copy of them.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, Visbit has a copy, make sure of that.
In case the building gets hit by a beer truck.
That's correct.
So, so Visbit does have copies?
Um, I'm just looking at my card file for a name in case you ask, sir. I don't have his card, but yeah.
That's alright. And please call me Kurt. I, uh, I come from a military background. My father was a colonel and I was in the army for eighteen years and then I moved out of the house. So, uh But I, I do understand that i- if it's natural for you to say sir, that's, that's fine too.
I appreciate that, sir, if it is.
The, uh, the next page starts with renovations and the year of the renovation nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand one, for which we'll always, be grateful for Peter Coffey and glad it wasn't me. Um, we, we have, uh, the building sections involved, high school, gymnasium, science wing, library and performing arts. We also have a, uh, I believe we still have a C, uh, DVD of the fire in the, uh, in the middle school gym, if anyone wants to see that. Um, under major repairs, we're, we're updating still. We've got, uh, obviously got boiler issues, as you all know, we've got auditorium issues and we've got, um, kitchen issues. Uh, the roofs, the best news of all, uh, membrane, new membrane roof all, all throughout with increased R value. And, uh, and the special maintenance of the roof scan. And, uh, I couldn't tell you how you do strontium imaging if my life depended on it. That's
It's kinda like putting the dye in your system and then photographing it?
It's just radioactive. Uh, next page, building walls. And, uh, basically gives you the insulation, the R value. And, uh, typical maintenance, re-point mortar on brick walls and damage are missing. Remove peeling paint and repaint as necessary. Uh, special maintenance on walls. Plywood backup in areas or sheet rock is easily damaged, like above the boys' urinals in the front and the auditorium, uh, lobby bathroom that we're getting punched a lot now. If a kid punches them, they're gonna end up in a cast. Um, and then also, which is really slick around here, is, is the, a regular maintenance involving stainless steel or brushed aluminum to be putting on the corners, looks a little institutional, but again, kids don't kick a corner of a wall when it's, uh, brushed aluminum often. Outside doors, as of course you all know, we had, I don't know how much is hearsay, uh, Mr. Worley, and how much is actual, actuality, but we replaced the, the front doors and the turret two or three times.
Four times.
Four times. And the fourth time, we got it right, we reinforced it, put it on steroids and it's actually across our fingers and knocking whatever's near for wood. We haven't had any other issues, but it was a design flaw. And those are great big doors. We should upgrade them, uh, as, as noted. We need more doors. Uh, we, we have a little bit of, uh, what do you wanna say? It's not out and out vandalism, but kids ignoring the viability of the lock systems and s- really yanking on doors when they wanna get in. And, uh, that reduces the lifespan of the doors. So, I will say that Mr. Worley spends more time on doors than anybody I've ever seen, it's really interesting. Uh, windows are new.
All windows? I picked that up, all windows?
And it was like everything The place that I can tell, back at the renovation in two thousand one, I can't find any old, old windows.
Yeah, I, I believe they're on, they, if you eyeball them, they all look the same. And we, we did go ahead and, and, uh, caulked them during my career here because they were, had been uncaulked. Um, we replace as required, we check things and, uh, the energy upgrade would be to replace with energy star rated windows when we do replace. Uh, heating system, I've spoken to this already, but, uh, Bob has much better, is much more articulate about it. We, when it says the system is an aborted Hartford loop design, I have no idea what it means, but I remember when we did it. And that was about, Glory was that, seven years ago now? Seven or eight? And it was, uh, we had, uh, clerk of the works in and a lot of guys that worked on the original boiler system. We couldn't balance, the two boilers were really having a hard time. And they created a new kind of loop, a shortened loop to help us recirculate water, I believe. And, uh, it hasn't really worked because we've got a, a split system, half steam, half hot water, and it, they're not very compatible. And in fact, until five years ago, or six years ago, we had the wrong pipe in the steam on the roof for steam. We had copper pipe and the steam was of course dissolving the, the soders. And so now we finally got black, you know, iron pipe, but sometimes you wonder if, to what end. Uh, we control it with a Jace system, which is, uh, a Java-based system. We can see them in Jace graphics, is Jace up and working, Mr. Worley?
You can see the graphics, sir.
You can see the graphics, okay. We do have emergency shut off ca- capability. Fuel storage, we're getting more information, I think, but it's a buried ten thousand gallon steel double wall oil tank. Um, we have sensors to de- detect leaks, alarms in the boiler room. We don't know when that was last serviced, scheduled maintenance, needs to be addressed and preventive maintenance schedule. It's not scheduled for reinforcement, but Mr. Worley, Day went down and checked out, or went up to UVM, excuse me, I'm used to saying down to UVM. Uh, up to UVM to, uh, check out a biomass, um, presentation. So, that would render, a biomass or a gas would render that facility not usable.
Quick question on the tank before we move forward.
Sure.
So, year two thousand maybe, but not I'm sorry, I had a quick question on the tank before we get too far away from it. So, in the year two thousand maybe, we're not really sure.
That's correct, I'll, I'll find out.
Yeah. Um, there's some new, there are new rules going into place
Oh, yes, sir.
About, and you know, the
Can you, can you help me out on that?
I may be able to, actually, yeah.
I'm, I'm in position, so I just kinda, why don't you just make us exempt from that?
No, I can't, I can't help you with that.
Those these water guys that run around?
No, this is not water, this is, this is, this, this is this contamination guys that are on this one. But no, I'm just pointing out that there's, that the fuel dealers should be more than happy to help make any determinations around what's down there because as they fill them, they kinda share joint responsibility. Yeah, anyway.
So, as, as we settled into fuel storage and boilers and those things and the heating plant, I'd like to remem- remind people that the, the idea is we're hopeful that energy savings under some kind of umbrella of efficiency Vermont will pay for major rest renovations of the heating, uh, system. And, uh, we, we took some people down for a tour and they're, it certainly looks like a medieval kind of torture chamber down there. It, it's, uh, it's not a pretty sight, but we do, uh, we do a lot of cleaning, we do a lot of monitoring. The day I went down, uh, taking people on a tour, we actually had, uh, the state in monitoring the condensate, was it Bob? And the condensate tank to make sure that we weren't having any kind of contamination in that. Uh, you can see there's an extensive, uh, schedule of maintenance, underscheduled maintenance. And, um, the scheduled replacement could only happen under the capital pan- plan. And, uh, the condensate return, uh, design, Bob didn't mince any words, is bad. And, uh, you know, it would take me forever, uh, to explain what all the steam savers are and the condensate tank and the return and the, and the beautifully, uh, plumbed, uh, garden hose that returns the condensate to the tank. It'd take me forever to try to explain that, Bob, I can't, it's 'cause I'm an English major. Uh, the HVAC is on the roof except for the dormant HVAC, which is in the, uh, auditorium, doesn't work and hasn't for a long time. Um, we seem to, uh, be getting closer to, uh, balancing our HVAC needs. Um, you see the equipment scheduled from Alliance, mechanical on the next page. And then the steam traps, which I don't begin to understand, although I, I do understand a little bit of the physics behind it. We also have a domestic hot water system, uh, that's for showers and such. And, uh, it's a, it's a standalone, you got three big tanks with a, uh, with a, uh, you know, laser fired thing. Um, we're aware that we need, of the temperature we need to keep the water at and we do it. The gymnasium ventilation system is probably our most functional, would that be true, Mr. Worley? That thing seems to
The, uh, the high school?
Yeah.
The middle school is pretty, is adequate also.
Yes, okay, so, and that's if you ever go up on the roof, that huge penthouse is basically the, the HVAC for the, for the high school gym. And, uh, you can read about that, the auditorium ventilation system. Uh, the two air handlers are located on the stage on the north and south ends of the ceiling. They're right over the stage on either wing, they're hanging there from the structural steel. And, uh, it's nineteen fifty-nine. We got one up and working since I've been here in the last nine years. It made so much noise that they couldn't perform during the performance and it started to smell bad as well. But as you know, the stage is built right above the, right next to the boiler, gets real hot in there. Without an air handler, it's really, really tough to, for kids, uh, to reach any kind of comfort level. And everything else under the auditorium ventilation system is, uh, functional in the sense that, um, I, in, it's non-functional, but, uh, his description is, is pretty much says it's, speaks for itself, the auditorium is closed. Uh, kitchen ventilation fan, we need immediate replacement. We, we need to, we just need a new one, period. Shop dust collection seems to be okay with the air hog. Uh, we have a lot going down in that, uh, if you've never been in the shop, the egg shop, it's worth visiting. Uh, air conditioning, window units and the computer labs are there to save the computers. Rooftop units inclusive HVAC section. So, we've got a couple places that are air conditioned, the principal's office, you know, all the important areas, guidance, principals. Just kidding. And the, the computer labs. And they keep on top of those and we are purchasing only energy star rated exterior conditioners. Central control system is Jace, are we getting better on that, Mr. Worley?
Yes, sir, word that's come along, that it is not, it's, it's been, it's a struggle.
It's been a struggle. Trying to match the, uh, the software with the hardware is one of the problems. We're having to use an old form of Java right now with an old computer. Or a newer form of Java, I don't know, are you on Ubuntu?
Old, we had to set up a, uh, a computer specific for the old version of Java to operate the Jace. It's, the, the, the system is not operational, the, the graphics are up, so I can, I can tell you what the temperature is in here or anywhere from, from a computer, but I can't, I can't manipulate it.
You can't change it. So, that's stuff that we're working on.
And, but that's not an issue with the school, that is an issue with Jace and Java.
Yeah.
And so, and, and it is, you know, they've been trying to fix it for six months.
Yeah, it'll get fixed.
It's not just our school, there are other, other locations, other facilities that are, and having same difficulty.
And this is something, the under central control system thermostats, you'll notice a little, um, aside that thermostats are not functional. All they are thermometers, they don't work. The only way you can adjust things is either manually or by Jace, if Jace were working, right?
The thermostats are not operational by design.
Right, right, yeah, it's nothing broken, it's just the way they are.
So, they're not, they're not mercury bulb thermostats?
However, I'm sure that there are some mercury thermostats somewhere in this plant.
Oh, I bet you're right.
Okay, just wanna make sure that I'm not misunderstood.
But if they're on, though, I was just gonna say, if there, if there are ones that are on the wall that are not being used, they should be removed and, and taken out to recycle.
Just placebo.
Yeah.
If we bury them.
Even though you're freezing at seventy.
And electric rates, you ought to see Kathy Cannon, 'cause she knows all.
She knows it all, no.
Energy mon- uh, monitoring, uh, we do monitor our energy use. And as a matter of fact, we, uh, made an upgrade because our middle school students, I think the year before Tommy Lee actually, uh, did a, a power study in the middle school gym and made recommendations to, um, to change our lighting and save a lot of power and a lot of electricity, and it was really cool to watch middle school kids do that. And then power transformer, were we ever determined if it's ours or not?
I, I don't know, I didn't even get an opportunity to, uh, contact Ms. Kathy. So, uh, I don't know if it, it was T-one, T-two's or, or ours or not.
But I, I see that we have no, uh, PCBs.
In our current service entrance, I'm not sure about that old pad down in the basement.
That's good, 'cause we won't end up being subject of a movie starring Julia Roberts. The, um
That was Huxtable.
Lighting in the classrooms, uh, we are going to eventually up, uh, do some upgrades to be more energy efficient. You got that. I wasn't sure, I, I wasn't sure that was gonna fly. And we are, we're looking into upgrading switch to occupancy sensor. We've already done that in some bathrooms, seems to be coming along. Lighting in the hallways, um, we seem to be doing pretty well. We're replacing the older fixtures. We have attractive looking lighting in most of the place. Anybody that comes into the school remarks on how, how light and bright we are, and that's part of it. Lighting in the auditorium obviously needs renovation. We need to really upgrade our nineteen fifty-nine lighting to high efficiency lighting. I'm not sure I'm gilding the lily on that or not. And then exit lights, um, you know, we take, the boys take a look at exit lights every summer and, and those are in good shape because they're, uh, necessary for emergency evacuations at night. The outside lighting, I was, I called Bob once on our cell phones because for the first time I saw all the outside lights on. And I, if, I've been here nine years, I've never seen that. So, I had to call him, tell him how much it looked like Paris. It was just gorgeous out there. And, uh, but that, but we are getting everything up to snuff and eventually it'll be LEDs. Uh, computers, uh, you'd have to talk ma- uh, mostly to, uh, Wendy, uh, Brusso. But we have, I just wanna remind everybody, we have, uh, one computer for every two students in the school. And we have more capacity than that with the, uh, with the wireless, with the wifi. And, uh, Wendy does a tremendous job of servicing those and making sure that electrical connections are, are on the up and up. Uh, dishwasher, that's the original dishwasher in the, in the kitchen. And it's, it's sort of dangerous if you don't know what you're doing. I think we're fifty-nine or fifty-eight. That's an old Hobart.
Really probably outlived its life.
Oh, absolutely, but it's, it's also got, it, you gotta be careful 'cause the doors aren't in sync, so if one doesn't go down, somebody's gonna get scalded and, you know, so you gotta be careful, but they really clean the dishes. Seriously, it's really hot water. Kitchen equipment, we are in deep trouble. And I'm ju- I'm not saying that for voting purposes, it's just we, uh, when the power went off the other day, um, it was a, we had to scramble, so when the, or when the water went off, I'm sorry, we had to scramble because you couldn't keep the, uh, coolers running without water because it's a, it's a thr- it's a one-way system. So, you had to scramble to shut off the, the circulators and then try to start them up again, time up the water pressure and, you know, it's just an archaic, uh, deal. Refrigeration is, we're, we're substandard. Refrigeration is, we're, we're substandard. Uh, we don't know enough about phantom loads, we know we probably got plenty. I went over this with Bob the other day, and he is sure we have plenty of phantom loads. And, you know, we have, teachers don't turn off their computers. We have, uh, you know, small LED lights all over the place that run subliminally. Flooring, we're almost all tile. We've got some carpet, looks pretty good. Uh, we do have a license for mon electrician to come in and take care of things. We really haven't had any issues there. Uh, fire safety equipment is up to snuff, right, Bob? And, uh, fire suppression system seems adequate. Elevators and lifts, since, since Bob's been here, we've actually, they all work. We've got two elevators and a lift, and the lift finally works on a regular basis, and that didn't happen for the first number of years I was here. District required training, we don't have, so you can see this is skeletal, but it gives you an idea, and also it begs for those numbers, uh, in those areas of the auditorium and the kitchen especially. And I don't think we, do we, I didn't seem to catch anything about the bleachers in there, but that's a standalone cost, probably.
So then you can go take this and then work towards that annual amount, that more budgeting for next year, and identify the items that would fall into that.
That's what Stephanie and Bob and I are gonna work on, is trying to get some kind of rational numbers surrounding that, and then also fleshing out, we know we've got to flesh out things like, for instance, if you jumped down on the ground and looked under these tables, each one of these tables is held together with about eight L brackets that we bought at Obashon, you know, with, uh, you know, so we're gonna have to be replacing furniture continuously in the, in the building, and I don't mean continually, continuously in the building for the next twelve years probably, to catch up, to catch our own tail. And, uh, so that's, we know that there's a lot of expenses like that. I do okay?
Yes, you did very well, thank you.
Thank you for putting it...
Can I, I need to clarify one thing, that, we just spoke about the fire suppression, fire monitoring. Uh, many of you have heard me say that we need that replaced, um, we are compliant, we're safe, um, but we need it replaced.
So ultimately...
I'm sorry, one more thing I didn't, I, I did, I didn't, I don't like to bring this up because I start stuttering every time I think about it, but our clock system, and our alarm system, and our intercom system... Are in such bad shape that, you know, literally people can't hear announcements, the clocks are all off, all over the place, and it's basically, what, what kind of a system is it, sir?
Arcade.
What, what's the name?
Simplex.
It's a simplex, thank you.
I knew what he was saying, I didn't want to say it publicly, but...
Well, it's an old system.
Your, your sped instructors down at the end of the hallway are gonna cruise, are wanna crucify me right now, I, I can't, you can't fix, you can't repair it, cannot catch it up, I can bring a technician in, it'll work, sometimes it'll stay, uh, I, you know, we're right to, I don't need to do any of this. It's not gonna last for two minutes.
But I just wanted to throw that out, that that's something we gotta build into a long-range budget as well, is that system is, again, a nineteen fifty-nine system with, um, no capacity for real upgrades.
So that'll be added to the miscellaneous?
That will be added in, that's one of those things that is specific to be added in.
I just want to say, this is great to be able to see everything laid out, and, you know, I'm super appreciative, especially being a building, I don't know how to manage a building, and you do, but it's nice to be able to see when asked. Um, you mentioned about the fire safety system, and you say it needs to be replaced. Am I not reading that in here, um, or is it, am I not seeing it in here? Fire safety equipment section indicates, you know, there's scheduled maintenance, that happens and so forth.
It does not say that, that the monitoring system needs to be replaced, doesn't say that.
But you think it should?
Oh, no, I know it should.
You know it should?
Yes, sir.
So it should say that, or not?
Yeah, it's a dynamic document.
Okay, no, which is fine, I just wanted to, to be clear, so...
The format is actually dynamic also, this is a format that, that, that came to us through, um, Norm Eklund. Working with, uh, I think he, I don't know who he works for, Department of Education, Vermont, who?
Yeah.
Vermont Superintendent.
Okay, Superintendent, okay, came through him, um, that was a document that, that some of the folks were comfortable with, like transferred information from Management Plus, and, and, and it will migrate it, you know, it will migrate it back to Management Plus. It's, it's, it's a little bit easier to, to see, and you can generate work orders from Manager Plus. Um, but, but it's, it's real simple, uh, to transfer one to this format, so you can, if you're used to it, I can, I can put it in that format. But that system needs to be corrected, placed, upgraded, pulled out a new system, put in.
So I think this is, to me, this gives us much more information that we had than we had previously without, you know, sitting down with you, and allows us to substantiate sort of the big ticket needs.
If Bob goes away some, and this is, this is very important for, for these documents to be, to exist.
Which answers the question I was gonna ask you, so I will.
Pardon me?
That answers the question I was going to ask, which is, is it useful to you, is it useful to your staff? And it sounds like the answer is yes.
Absolutely.
And then can I ask, um, that you update this asbestos section? Is the awareness, the, our book, the six-month inspection?
Asbestos.
Asbestos.
Uh, the asbestos plant needs to be updated, can, you said, can you ask me what?
Can you, can you update this section?
I can, I, I shall.
You know, the two-hour training, all your staff has to, you, you know, I don't have to go into that, okay.
This is very helpful, uh, one, maybe I missed it, is there a section in here on plumbing?
It, it doesn't pull this out, Management Plus does, Management Plus does.
I'm just thinking that probably falls in the high turnover rate as well.
High dollars, damn, that can add up to some money real, real fast.
So what I'm imagining is, we're gonna be boiling down this overall plan into a, a list of, of needs, and then you're gonna be prioritizing those on an annual basis. And we're gonna be trying to come up with a logical way to fund chunks of this identified work every year. I think that's our, that's our goal, right?
What I think is gonna happen.
It also doesn't address that gap, so...
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about, the athletic fields and the grounds.
Well, the parking lot.
Um, we can include, I mean, we can broaden this, I, I, the, uh, every, any facility, no matter whether it's a school, manufacturing facility, whatever it is, a grocery store needs a predictive and preventive maintenance plan. There, there, there never was one here, not that I'm aware of, all right? For whatever reason, you, you hired me, and, and so, and so we started working on some of those things. We've identified some issues, and I have to applaud the school board, you took, you're, you're going after it, good job, great job, okay? At some, you know, the, the conversations can be testy at times, I applaud that also. You know, we're not here to be best of friends, but, but we all have a, a, a common goal, and we're all after that. And, and this, this document that you've asked for will help. This thing that you guys were, uh, did the second reading and adopted, in there it says, and I love this, by October first, May, I'll prepare and submit to y'all through the principals and the superintendent outline, and, and I'll broaden that up, I, that's a great idea. And, um, and that, so that, so I'll have that, you'll get presented with that. Um, it will not necessitate, necessitate me to be here, um, you'll get that report, and if you have any questions, you can diffuse that down to me through the principal, principals, or if you do want to see me, I'll, I'll come on in, but I, I think it's great.
I'd, I'd like to respond a little bit to the outdoors issues, and that is that, um, one of the things we, we find is that, you know, you know how much Peter puts into fields, you know, aerating and, and getting different, uh, top soils in, and getting the right clay for, you know, home plate and all that stuff. I mean, he's got a pretty, a pretty advanced, uh, program out there, but really, if you look at our, our facilities outside, they're about as nice as any, they're certainly the nicest of any medium-sized school in the state. And so we don't have a whole lot broken outside, like we do inside, we got more broken inside than outside. And so, uh, we're lucky to have Peter, and, you know, so it looks pretty good. We've got a guy that, who mows everything, um, on staff, and so the front, we usually look like a pretty good school. Our curb appeal is pretty good. Um, we've, we fixed the most broken things outside, which is the roof and the fascia, and, uh, we're gonna finish that if the bond goes, and those are the things that needed the most attention. There's some trees that need to come up, and there's some, you know, we, of course, we know about the parking lots and stuff, but in general, our outside is pretty solid, and has been kept up pretty solidly, so, but a lot of that we owe to Peter, so...
Yeah, I know, I mean, he's anticipating Roland being gone at some point, and he's responsible for a lot of that maintenance, that's basically not costing the school very much money, so once Roland's gone, you know, how do you account for that?
As such, it might be interesting to try and imbue some of that work that, that Roland Gaiet does into, I know, a page of this on exterior facilities, maybe Peter can assist putting that together. That's your, your calling.
But if you can broaden this, well, I have to say something to Mr. Wobes, uh, Mr. Meehan, he's done a job up there. Basically, what the facility team does is just mow, he mows the varsity field, most of the other fields are mowed by, uh, by facility staff member, but, uh, he takes care of that, he fertilizes it, sprays it, brings in the, whatever soils for the ball of diamond and all that, I, I don't know about that.
But that still comes down to the maintenance budget, right?
Uh, not really, not really, that's, that's mostly out of athletics or, or booster athletics.
But the same section would include things like anticipating needs in parking lots and walkways and so on.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's...
That stormwater maintenance.
So it would also be on that same page?
Right, that's my balance, yeah, yeah. But you can add, you can add those athletic fields to, I mean, this document is, I mean, we can put all kinds of sections in.
Another piece to the puzzle.
I can put, make books in the library if you want, if you want a section on that, I mean, that's, you, you broaden it to whatever you want to do. I don't want to do that, but I will.
No, I don't think you can, but...
All right. All set?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Believe me, I'm more than good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worley.
You asked if you could leave, and you may, if you want to.
Permission.
Not permission, just, you know, answer to your question. Uh, budget development?
Lot of handouts.
Tackle that another day.
So there are four items being passed out.
This is still a discussion, so, you know, we shouldn't have a problem with action.
Right.
I understand.
Yep. What, what would you like to start with, Jim?
Well, I guess we'll start with equalized pupils. Just wait another few seconds here.
I wish the folks from Pan were here.
So, um, so equalized pupils, uh, preliminary numbers, I've inserted them in the chart so we can see the trends over time since, uh, two thousand and eleven. Um, this is just preliminary, this will not be locked into place for another few weeks. Um, this is actually the second, this is the second iteration I've received. So we do see a loss in the district of about, um, thirty-seven equalized pupils. And this is the, um, you know, these are the weighting, it's giving a weight to students, where an elementary student is equal to one, and a high school student is equal, it's like one point one-three. There's an additional weighting for, um, students on a, on a education plan, students that, um, have free and reduced, students that have, are, um, English lan- language learners, so that's the three larger categories. We can count preschool, preschool is equal to point four-six, so there's a whole calculation that's done.
IVP, free and reduced lunch, and what was the third one? Uh, it's for English.
English, language learners.
Thank you. And is pre-K in this too?
Pre-K is in this, yes.
Thank you.
And so this is...
Can we talk about student teacher ratios, is it based on equalized pupils?
No, it's based on enrollment, I believe, based on enrollment. This is what, um, the equalized pupils is important, we use it as a basis here for, um, allocating the super, the administrative assessment from the superintendent's office. It's also, um, a factor in computing, um, the tax rate. And I just want to touch on this, um, any questions about equalized pupils, so it's just preliminary? It may change fractions or so of a percent, it's usually been my experience, not, big changes will come after this.
If you were to summarize, I know the supervisory union meeting, probably in October, September or October, we looked more by, uh, actual grade level at what the populations were. Have we stabilized at the elementary schools in the younger grades, or are those still showing decline?
It's still showing, it depends. Dorisburg's hanging in there, um, B U S actually increased a little bit, and Addison is, is seeing the biggest losses.
Thank you, yes, this is, this is what we, what we... Thank you.
Um, the next one I just want to touch on is, is budget trends, and actually Jeff asked me to put this together to show, um, the increase-decrease in just the total expenditures over time. And then as far as the tax rate goes, prior to FY two thousand and nine, the rate was computed totally differently than it is. This was the beginning of Act one-thirty. So prior to that, the, you know, everything was broken up by town, and was, you know, each town included that in their budget.
Can I just point out a little factoid that occurs in here for our audience, that between FY ten and eleven, even though we reduced the budget spending significantly by almost five, four and a half percent, the tax rate went up.
Yes, it did, yep. Right, so even the rate for FY thirteen wasn't that far off the rate for FY ten, I mean, a lot of comparisons can be drawn here.
So this tax rate value doesn't necessarily track exactly with our spending decisions.
That's right, that's right.
On people wise, people chart Kathy shows from eleven through projected for fifteen. Over that, uh, period of time, that four, five-year stretch, we've lost about seventy-five equalized pupils. And equalized pupils would generate our funding.
Right.
It's about a six percent decline over two, three years.
And it's interesting to look at the equalized pupil spreadsheet, because I get the mass spreadsheet that has every school in the state. So they, they say this is your, you know, your tier average, tier average, and then you see all of the added weights put on for high school students, and, um, the, you know, the lesser amount for the preschool, and then all those other factors that are added in. And then what they still do is they add all that up, and then they apply a factor so that there's not more equalized pupils than there are actual pupils in the state, okay?
Oh, to everybody.
Oh, to everybody.
To everybody. So, so if you think about a district like, like Winuski, for instance, that has a high percentage of E L L, you know, they get a big boost. But there's, but, but the equalized pupils equals the actual pupils statewide. There's not phantom students statewide.
Giving more students to.
It's just redistributing the students.
Interesting. That's interesting.
That the funding not the students, uh, deemed to create.
So it's like a host town benefit.
Yeah, there is.
For high F T E individuals.
High needs. Okay, alright. Um, so then just looking at the special ed assessment here, um, so I, I have re, um, I have recalculated what the assessment would be, um, based on the preliminary equalized pupils. And that change has been made here in the high school budget. I will point out however, um, since, um, the last time that we looked at this, V U E S, um, added a high cost student of about two hundred thousand dollars or so. So that, um, is, that impact is seen here across the board. So, but I don't, um, plan to change the total costs for, um, special ed at this point. Although we, um, are looking at, um, the assessment and we are looking at the impact, um, to schools and I don't know how you would explain it, if we were to allocate the high school population by town. So Tom is working on this calculation. If we allocated the, let's just, I'm just gonna use Addison. If we allocated the Addison high school students, because the equalized pupils, I get it broken down by town. So if we looked at the high school portion plus the elementary portion and comparing that to what the actuals would have been.
That's what this does.
No, we're, we're, we're breaking down, so Addison's part of the high school, or Ferrisburg's part of the high school. Plus, plus their elementary. And comparing that total versus how, how this is done. And Tom's got it all worked out.
We have some scenarios to look at, but, um, because the law just happens to coincide with, um, a year in which we have fairly significant expenditures at the secondary level and, um, at one of the elementary schools. It, it, um, makes the assessment of that cost to the districts, um, in some cases unbearable. So we're trying to look at how we can still assess and meet the spirit of the law, um, perhaps in a, in a manner different than, um, what we do with our S U assessment, for example.
And I think you need to wait until we get revenues to see what the net effect is. Right.
So basically.
Revenues.
She can't hear you. Oh, okay. I think we need to wait until we see what the revenues are for special ed. To see the net effect to each school district. And compare that to, um, how it might have been.
We'll probably hear about revenues.
Next week.
Right in time.
Just in time.
Do we have a meeting next week?
No, but we, do you want to?
Might as well.
No.
Okay, so looking at the budget, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
No, go ahead.
So, looking at the budget, the only changes that I have made are to the special ed assessment. There was a, a two thousand dollar, um, server that got left off the other, the last time we looked at this. And then the administrative assessment for the S U, um, I believe that we have, um, let's see what page are we on? There'll be savings there because we have, um, a carry forward, a fund balance carry forward from the S U. So looking at page sixteen, um, we have in an estimated, um, administrative assessment for the S U. Which is, um, this one is showing a savings of about fifty-one thousand dollars. So looking at page sixteen in the middle, the administrative services assessment.
So. Oh, it's finished.
Okay, so those are the only three changes that I've made to this budget. And we are looking at, just with that, an increase in spending of three point nine two percent.
Is there a reason we haven't yet added in what the contract says the staff will have for a raise?
So the teachers.
Regardless of what comes out of the negotiations. Right now, the contract says if negotiations do not proceed, then this, whatever that is, is not baked into this yet, correct?
I think then this is, what is then this? There's nothing in here for teachers.
Right, there, there's no increase in salary for staff in here because the contract hasn't been negotiated yet, right? However.
Support staff is in here.
Okay, okay, so, so the, the, the teaching staff, there's no increase in here for the teaching staff. What does the contract say happens if negotiations take eighteen months to get through? Does the contract say that the salaries stay flat or do they increase by some percent?
Um, I don't have the language in front of me, Neil, but I think they stay static.
They stay, they stay flat. And then when a contract.
Right.
Right, okay, so that, so what I just wanna make sure is that this is a fair representation of what is happening now.
As best we know.
As best we know. And that's not to presuppose that contract negotiations won't go well. It's to suggest, I just wanna make it clear that this percent increase of three point nine could be something larger.
Mm-hmm, could be.
And we're not necessarily likely to know by the time we have to move this budget, correct? So what are we going to do about that?
We're going to, first of all, I don't think, we're beginning negotiations next Wednesday.
Right, no, under, understood.
Unlikely it will be finished by the time this needs to go to press. So we will, um, try to anticipate what may happen.
I guess that's what I'm saying is, you know, to just start, get a, a real starting point. I don't know what that anticipation would look like, but it feels to me like we need some sort of something.
All the budgets are gonna need that.
All of them, okay.
And so also what's not in here is we just voted to put in one percent, uh, maintenance.
Right.
So that's not in here. Um.
Well, ten forty-seven five, which is the amount I just budgeted this year, so it's fifty thousand dollars short.
So it's more, right.
Well, it's not to exceed one percent.
Well, one percent on a million, on nine million eight seventy-two is ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Right, so we're.
So we need another.
Fifty, right?
Fifty thousand.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Right, so we can make that decision. Um, I would, anyway, we'll get there.
Right, and then, um, the results of new borrowing.
Right, right. Are you, are you looking for any specific guidance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Not specific as much as, as overall.
Your expectations in terms of what this budget looks like in terms of final dollar or percentage. So that we can work at the details and, you know, when we meet, we're gonna have to meet again in January, maybe before our regular board meeting too. So if we can have some guidance for the in-between, we can do some of that work in, in next month.
I didn't ask on page eleven, special services, there's no budget for two thousand and fourteen?
So remember, that's been moved into the S U and is in the special ed assessment, right.
Will be an assessment for special ed.
I wanted to ask one detailed question also because it was brought up to me by a constituent. They were looking at the Walden, um, budget, which I love Walden. It's fantastic program. My son goes there. The budget to actual shows a big departure in their travel. And I see it perpetuating in our ongoing expenditures right now. I see we're already almost double what we budgeted for. So, um, oh, I don't know, what's up with that?
Matt?
They do great work. I'm not, I'm, I'm not suggesting they should do anything different. However, I, it is a fair question that was brought up.
They have, uh, they have the Adirondack trip in late August. They have the, uh, solo, which doesn't cost much of anything. They have the New York City trip and they have their, um, trip to Concord. A couple of years ago, Matt unintentionally overspent or spent from the wrong line item and got out of whack. Now, why it hasn't come back into whack, um, I really can't explain. I mean, it, it is a, there's a lot of travel-based activity in there and it's a, uh, and it's, as you know, it's one of the, uh, it's the two spines, that, that's mixing metaphors. The two important aspects are the well-oiled, place-based. And then if you think of place-based as also being other places, uh, places to be, uh, you know, compared, it justifies their travel, but it might not justify their expense. And I'd have to ask Matt what, what, where that came from. Because I had thought that we were going to, Kathy, you could help me on this maybe. I thought we were gonna retrench backwards to the expense it used to be. But somehow we're still caught with an excess and I, I.
Well, either that or just budget what it is, what it really costs.
We've increased the travel budget on there and I thought administration was going to talk to him to say, you know, you need to pay attention.
And we have done that.
Okay.
How many different places did you say again that there now?
They go to the Adirondacks for an overnight. It's way, way in the Adirondacks. They go to, uh, they go down to Walden Pond. They go down and see the manse and, you know, Bronson Alcott's house and all that stuff.
And you go to New York City.
They go to New York City and they go down and stay at, it's all, just about a hostel. But they, uh, they do an awful lot, they pack a lot of, of stuff in there. And, uh, so those are the three major trips, the Adirondacks, New York City and Concord.
And how many students?
Uh, right now, we've got, uh, in the whole program as, we got, we're adding one, so. Yeah, second semester, so that'll be up to twenty-two.
So, I mean, the reason I bring it up is mostly just to encourage that we budget appropriately so that.
I just wish I could answer your question.
You're just doing this, you know.
No, I wish I could answer your question.
And, and it's not, and it's not a, um, a judgment on, on, on Matt and Becky at all. It's just a fair question.
We put that figure in so they wouldn't have to deficit spend.
And then the, the reason I even brought it up is I began to think about it and that is that that program is a, is a draw. People choice in, in order to go to Walden. And so in a way, though it's not a ton of money, we're deficit spending in order to support travel for kids that are choosing in and their money doesn't follow them, right?
Absolutely.
So it's, um, that's just me protecting the investment of the citizens of the gens.
Yeah, that's absolutely true.
Guidance. I think it's starting.
Keep going, keep going. Definitely.
Just talk about, and these are gonna seem somewhat disparate. One is in, perhaps an administrative item, maybe it's addressed at the supervisory union level. But I would like to see us on a path that addresses the fixed assets accounting, which I understand to be the reason that we're not getting clean audits, is that we don't have fixed asset accounting. So, I know we're, we're looking at all the, the costs, but it seems to me like we need to invest some funds to get whatever help we need to be able to prepare the schedules so that we can then look to a point where we would be getting clean audits. Otherwise, we never will. And from my perspective, that's really not acceptable. So I'd really like to see as part of this budget, a plan that takes us to how we get clean audits. That's, that's one thing. The other is, and, you know, maybe it's not tonight and I realize that there's sensitivity in terms of what can be spoken about, but there needs to be some discussion looking at almost a twenty-five percent increase in special education spending. So I understand it's going to the supervisory union. I understand it's gonna get reallocated. It's got, look at it in gross dollars. It's five hundred thousand dollars. It's a twenty-five percent increase. We need to have some discussion to understand what's going on, the good work the school has done to try to limit it to that 'cause I know good work goes on, but we can't just see that and not spend some time understanding what that, what that is.
We've been identified as a high-spending school.
Special ed, we've twice, and we've had to, um, submit plans to how we're going to, uh, how we're gonna, uh, improve that situation. That being said, um, when you get, if you get ambushed with, with three or four extraordinary expense kids in one grade that you don't see coming, all of a sudden, you know, you, you've got an enormous amount of tuition going out. And, and to be fair, you've got money coming back to offset the extraordinary expenses, but it's still more expensive than a regular kid going to school, obviously. So, um, one of the conundrums, just to open up the debate. One of the conundrums that we face, that Steph and I face as administrators, is if we had a, let's say we had a homecoming with D O kids. The costs to us to bring back the, what, what, we got eighteen kids? Sixteen, eighteen? The cost incurred to us to bring them back into our school, we'd have to build up another wing. We'd have to employ numerous special educators, many paraprofessionals. And when they did the cost analysis between keeping kids tuition there and bringing them back into the school, it look, it appears anyway, that to pay tuition to the D O consortium is a better, uh, use of our money than to try to achieve a homecoming with the, uh, kids of that profile. And diversified occupations is down in Middlebury. It's a consortium school. So, I mean, we, we know all the, uh, we know all the, almost every single expense and sometimes it becomes, uh, a moral or ethical imperative to make sure the kid gets the services he needs and we don't have the services here. At that point, that causes a, it causes a mess because there's no other infrastructure except for public education to take care of any of the kids on the spectrum. And you can make an argument to mainstream multiple handicap kids at an enormous cost. You can make a case to, you know, mainstream blind, deaf kids at quite a cost. You get a deaf kid with a high I Q, um, it could be extraordinarily expensive for two, two signers 'cause they wear out signers. I mean, there's just so many, um, so many facets to this, this problem. It's really hard for us. I mean, you know, Kara can come up here and explain away some of the expenses, but really, we've gotta find a way, either for the state to fund things differently, to come up with more, uh, services to help us. Or, you know, we could, we just don't, we're not the kind of community, or communities, that turn our back on any kid. We never have since I've been here. And evidently, that's expensive.
As a matter of philosophy and as a matter of, um, a teaching perspective, um, we have to do that as well. It's not, it's not an option. So there are, there are strict laws in regard to, um, students in need of special education. I just wanna, I think it was two years ago, maybe three years ago, when I first saw the line, first saw a line in special ed that was a million dollars. And I said, what the heck is this? Somebody, you know, it's a misprint. And it wasn't a misprint. So we'll probably look at a third year as being a high spender because of the circumstances that exist right now. They're not going to always exist. That population will change and we'll, we'll see, you know, ebb and flow. And that's one of the reasons we're moving it all into the SU, to try and soften that blow. I don't know what you do, Jeff, as Ed said, when you, when you've got three or four kids who are fifty or eighty thousand dollars of pop programs that we have to access outside of town, if you will, outside of the state in some cases, to meet their needs. If we, if there were options, I'd like to know what they are.
I think there's, I think there's less discretion than the public may perceive that we had. I, I don't think it's a matter of let's train our people to, you know, keep their purse strings a little closer to them. I, I just think because it is so structured and it is so involved with law and individual rights and, and wanting to do the right thing by the kids, that when you're coming together as a team, you don't have a whole lot of options for, for kids who are either, have all sorts of disabilities, some of which are emotional and mental health issues. But it's just tremendously challenging to pare down some of those costs. It's, it's almost impossible to do.
Which is not to say that we don't take a look at it, Jeff. I had mentioned DO earlier and, um, that program, I think, was instituted sometime in the eighties in the, in the three district consortium. Made significant use of that over a period of time. That consortium is now talking about whether or not it can continue to, um, serve as it has, which would mean that those students that we now have at DO would need another option. It may be that we bring it back to the district. And what happens there is what Ed was describing earlier. The plans that we developed to, because we're identified as high spenders, as high spenders, in some cases, there is no response. You've got a student that, um, has significantly extraordinary needs. We have to provide them somehow. And this, this state in the northeast, um, I don't know about, um, New Hampshire. I know a little bit about Maine. But in-state, we have very few options with the, with the heavy hitters.
And then for the students that was spending over fifty thousand, we get ninety percent of that back. And there are a handful.
So we should see, when we see the net of the cost of the program that we're estimating and an estimated revenue, we should see a, a net that's a little more reasonable.
Next week.
Any other questions? Just to finish, so we've been identified as a high-spending district. We had to prepare. So is that the, the agency of education that's asking us to? And is there any outcome from those reports? Do they send in efficiency experts or do they say, oh, you've done everything? We're satisfied? What's the outcome of that process?
Honestly, they've accepted our restructuring plan two years in a row. And which, what that means as far as added assistance, they, they give you some advice. They give you some guidance, but as you know, the agency is bare bones themselves. So we don't get somebody coming in and sitting with us and massaging the numbers with us. We just have, they look at our action plan carefully, our action plan to address the high spending, and they approve it and they monitor us next year. And so it's a monitoring system. I mean, we need to tell the public, our voters, that we're, we've been classified as a high-spending district. But it's very hard to educate up, um, anybody to understand what that means in, in, in special ed terms. And as far as IDEA goes, our hands are almost completely tied once they've made the third gate of eligibility. There's, there's no way to cut back on programming once you've found them to be eligible for special ed. ESTs were supposed to take care of that. The educational support teams were supposed to reduce the numbers in special ed.
We do really well at the number of ESTs. That was one of the cost data points he gave us.
We do a really good job at EST, better than any high school I've seen and any, better than any middle school I've seen. But on the other hand, it hasn't diminished our special ed population whatsoever. So, go figure. And we don't have an extraordinarily high five oh four, which some people look like as minor league IEPs. We don't have a whole lot of them either. But the ESTs, as much success as we have, you would think it would prevent kids from needing the extra help, but that hasn't been the case. And our biggest spike, I don't know if Steph can probably support me, she hasn't been there this long, but I'm sure she's seeing it. Our biggest spike's been in, in mental health. It, it's not in learning problems. It's in mental health.
And there are even fewer resources for, to address kids with that need. And it's certainly difficult to do that here in the setting.
Tom, to illustrate this point, I just made, Tom and I were talking about money today. And he took the money out just for the purposes of discussion that were related to out-of-state tuitions and things. And all of a sudden, we felt like we could talk about the issues about special ed rather than just kinda reeling with the number because the number is so distracting. It's, it's so big, you can't ignore it. And yet there are things you wanna do and actions you wanna take, but you can't get past that, you know, millions of dollars that you're, you're spending. It's really tough to move forward on it.
Jeff, I just want, want to assure you, if that's necessary, that, um, efforts are, are being made, um, daily to try and deal with students here. It's not, it's not a first option to send them somewhere else, ever.
The job of taking care of students?
I wouldn't be, if, if, I gotta be careful how I answer on camera. Let's just say that in the past, South Burlington's been a target for that reason. And, uh.
Destination.
Destination, yeah.
Right. Yes, it's been a destination, not a target. I'm sorry. But South Burlington, uh, it, it was a self-fulfilling prophecy. They said they wanted the best, you know, special ed services that, that money could buy. And they did, and they got exactly what they asked for, which is a huge number of, a huge influx of people with IEP kids.
But it should be every school is doing the best that they can.
I would hope so, but I've been places that I are less so.
But housing is, housing is different here, especially low-income housing. So it's kinda the offset.
Anything else? I'm not closing, I'm kinda giving other questions or comments. Before we talk about what we think a, a good target will be. Cause that's what, um, that's what Tom and Kathy are asking for and Ed and Stephanie. Guidance from us. Be it, um, ideas or suggestions or a number or any way you wanna create that guidance.
So it's three point nine two right now? But it's different though because you need to put in teachers.
And the capital project.
And the one percent.
Well, potentially, we'd be adding money to this if we're successful and tomorrow's vote on the bond issue would go in as well.
I need to check this. It might already be in here. Looks like it might already be in here.
So with those tweakings, is it more like four?
I mean, traditionally, December and January, when we sit down with Tom, really hash out a lot of issues on the budget. So that's why we're asking.
So just to put that in perspective, you could go back to the first sheet that we looked at. And, uh, you know, I just, I know averages aren't always a good thing to, to look at, but it's, it's a way that I try to put things in perspective. The average, um, the average increase, although there were some years that were decreased, the, the average increase over the last eight years has been three point six seven. We're above that now. Last year was almost six percent. The year before that, or the three years before that, it was unnaturally low. One point nine nine percent and one percent and significantly, insignificantly zero or significantly zero in fiscal year eleven, so.
What downside would there be? I mean, I saw the letter from the governor asking everybody to do level funding if they possibly could or, you know.
I just remind the board, and I think it's reflected here in eleven, twelve anyway. One of those was the year we were, um, dealt challenges for change and we were one of the few districts that actually met the criteria.
Yeah.
For what?
And it didn't get us anything.
People rolled right over.
Yeah. While others were increasing by upwards of ten percent. So I think four and a half percent to me is, uh, is something to shoot for. And just because historically, it's below what, uh, what the highest increases have been, but it's, uh, it's also taking into consideration some of the edicts that we've put forward. You know, I do not wanna see, uh, an unfunded, uh, maintenance and operations plan. I don't wanna see, uh, anyone, you know, not treated as an, uh, individual with, uh, with needs. So, you know, that's, that would be my suggestion, is to try to shoot for four and a half percent. See what that'll, what effect that has and identify what the, the friction points are in the next week or two when we know what the revenue is. But I, I'm just one person. I'm trying to set the bar and see what others think.
I think something that would be more than five would be difficult to, to deal with or to stomach at this point. But shooting for what Kurt said, I think, would be appropriate. And if it's a little more than that or somewhere in that range, that would be probably most acceptable.
So just to add the fifty thousand that we're going to augment repairs and maintenance, puts us at a four point four four percent increase.
Did we determine how much you wanted to put forward for capital projects fund?
We haven't.
That'll be part of this also.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be a separate vote.
Still part of the total spend.
Still part of the total spend.
So a hundred thousand makes it a five point five percent increase.
And we've got the, um, money to add to M and O, right?
So adding the fifty.
That's the one percent?
Yeah.
And then adding the hundred brings it to five point five percent.
What about staff increases of any sort?
Yeah, that might speak. You know, I, I really think we need to know what the revenues are gonna be.
Yeah.
So I mean, as much as we try to do it without knowing every year, um, I really, I think, setting a goal and, and then finding out what the friction points are, why, you know, that. By friction points, I mean specifically tell me what, um, or tell us why we can't get to that, you know.
And I think looking at the rate by ten will be important because the elementary budgets are going to be affected more by this special ed assessment than we are here.
Than the high schools, right. I mean, that's, that's what I think. So four and a half percent would be my suggestion. You don't need that formally or? Yeah.
You're just looking for direction, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Then we'll get down to the last tax.
This is my first, um, experience going through this process.
And it's okay not to be comfortable, Jeff.
So I'm really gonna defer to your judgment in terms of providing guidance on, on a number. What I would be interested in, in the budget formation provides the vehicle to try to have the discussion, is trying to take a, a longer-term look at things and including a couple of other metrics in this analysis. But discussing this in terms of percentage and dollars doesn't talk about program. It doesn't talk about, you know, here's where we are in terms of test scores. Here are all our educational initiatives and this is how we're funding those. It, it, it doesn't look at the reality of declining student numbers in a rational way. I'm not suggesting in one year's budget, we can do much about that. But trying to take a longer-term view and having some sense of where our populations really are heading, what kinds of, I, I, I'm gonna use the term, I'm not sure it's the right one, student-teacher ratios. Ideally, we should be looking for how that relates to what real class sizes are that are occurring in school. Other ways that we can potentially be delivering program. I mean, those are all the things that aren't an answer about a percentage for a vote I know we have to take in January, but they help inform that conversation and perhaps start to, you know, point us on a, a, a path that helps us control costs in the future.
And there, there is a tipping point with teacher, student-teacher ratio. And, uh, you know, and it, it's a, it's interestingly slippery. Like Stephanie's, uh, programming at the middle school has some huge classes. I mean, for Vermont, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six kids in a class. That's, for Vermont, that's huge. Not huge in Missouri. But it's, um, it, so it becomes a little bit of a slippery slope. We have, we are losing, you know, kids gradually, but the tipping point's gotta come when there's, when you can't fill a schedule. And we haven't gotten there yet. And I, I just like, I don't know how many board members were on the board when, you know, sort of, you know, I preemptively riffed a science teacher and a social studies teacher to get the numbers down because we saw the numbers drifting downwards. And then Peter Reynolds, uh, proposed a riff for a math teacher that was successful for the same reason. And now, a couple of years later, and Steph's got burgeoning, you know, classes. So, uh, that is a metric you, we really have to look hard at. And I think there's a number of ways to report out on that.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, in fairness, so I've come to budget information meetings in years past and one of the questions I always asked about was where are we with world languages? And, you know, we've, we now don't have that in the middle school. Am I correct in that? We don't?
We have French.
In the abstract, yeah.
We have French for eighth-grade students, second semester. They are, they're taking a French one essentially.
I, I only raise that as, you know, but one example of trying to relate, what are we doing programmatically to our budget? And if we can't, you know, physically have more teaching capacity in the school to expand our language capacity, which we know affects how kids read and write and we know from our test scores that that's where we need to be focusing. So what other ways can we start to do this? Are we working cooperatively with surrounding districts? Are we using technology? I don't know the answers to these questions. I know there's research around all of them and I know you've wrestled with them. I think they're good things to wrestle with, yeah.
I think it requires, um, you know, such a delicate, uh, discussion to have. And we have had that, those delicate discussions in Addison for very different reasons over the past couple of years. But I think it would be worth having a more global conversation and perspective about programming and, uh, and trends before, um, the board starts to engage in the very dicey conversation which some people can perceive might be targeted to one particular set of numbers or one particular course. And then you got constituencies backpedaling, pushing. So I really think, uh, your point's really well taken. You need to step back a little bit, have more of this global thing about programming. And then you can start to look at some of these individual courses. Because the, the little bit that I've picked up on in the last couple of years of paying attention a little bit to the high school conversations is. Because the, the little bit that I've picked up on in the last couple of years of paying attention a little bit to the high school conversations is whenever anyone raises a question that seems to be going towards some unspoken end, you immediately have pushback, and you can't really have the conversation up here, which is, I think, where the board needs to be. But that's a really good point.
So. Any other direction, or? Comments or questions?
Extra meeting in early January?
Yes, I agree.
Might wanna take a look.
All vacations will be shortened.
So our regular meeting, I think, is the thirteenth of January. So if we could meet during the week of the sixth. Maybe even Monday, January sixth, a week ahead of time.
Are you saying, uh, January sixth?
Yep.
Monday, before?
And it really doesn't work before then.
No.
And just make a, a budget workshop meeting, that's the sole item?
Okay. That's good.
Everybody good?
Six, same time, six?
Six o'clock.
Here?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Here at the library?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um. Anything else on budget? Anything, uh, any need for an executive session tonight?
No.
Okay. Well, we tried to, uh, to manage our time tonight. We're about four minutes over the original planned time. I guess we could, uh, say that we added, uh, one, two, three agenda items, so maybe that caused the four minutes overage, but, uh,
All my fault?
We deferred on reports.
Two out of three are Kathy's issues.
Yeah, defer on a lot of reports.
What's that?
We deferred on reports.
Yes, and we deferred on others, so, um,
So it's not on my fault?
For, no, it isn't. So, uh, after having this experience, uh, would anyone suggest, uh, anything different? Because I'd like to still manage time this way. Uh, yeah, there is a way. I don't think you're gonna like it, but, so we, we, we spent two and a half hours. Uh, I'm just, I'm doing a, an evaluation at the end, just to, so everybody has an opportunity to, to, for input. We are meeting, um, as a, as a, an executive group, uh, the principals, the superintendents. Uh, Bob was there this past time, um, a week before the meeting to go over agenda items and timing to try to, uh, control the amount of time we spend. I'd like to continue doing that, and, so, we'll see you all. That would be on the sixth, right? So, sixth at eight thirty. All right, thank you very much, uh, the meeting is adjourned.